All to order. City of Columbia Plan Commission meeting is October fourteenth, twenty twenty five. We'll start with the invocation by Dan, then we'll all rise for the pledge allegiance.
Lord, we acknowledge your presence among us and we pray for your guidance during this meeting. Give us the wisdom to work in the best interest of everyone in our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dan, if you call roll, please.
Scott? Dylan? Ted?
Here.
Jeff?
Here.
Rick?
Here.
Mark?
Here.
We've all received a copy of the September ninth meeting minutes. Is there any additions or corrections to those? If not, they will stand as presented.
Can we start?
I don't know.
Can we start?
Can we, can we start a public hearing early?
Yeah, well, it shouldn't.
Public hearing, sorry. Okay. First item is a public hearing starts at seven oh five, so we've got to kill four minutes.
Well, should go to E R F if you think you can do them in four minutes.
Okay, we could try that. We could go down to site plan review for tractor supply. Are they here?
Go ahead and do that.
Okay. Find it here.
They're here or not here's.
Think we can go ahead and do that. It's a designated food truck area. They'd like to have a designated food truck area. We can go ahead without them being present. Okay. Okay.
Do you want a motion?
Yeah, I guess.
I'll make a motion to approve the food truck venue based upon all permitting and fees required to be in that location.
A second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Dan?
Ted?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Now, we'll just wait a couple minutes and then we'll go back to the first item.
He's down. He's a tall man, right? He's walking forward to see how good he saw. Yeah, I'll give his papers. Yes, more than some hours. He's pretty close to that.
I bet.
Yeah. So he likes it. It's job security, right?
Oh, yeah. And today it is.
But actually not. They have their own trainings. It's like outside will happen.
Yeah.
Guess it's a pretty nice place. You're teaching him to drive equipped. You know, he's getting into certifications.
No, I think we're Okay, alright. Alright. Well, we're close enough to seven oh five. First item is a public hearing. Application of conditional zoning for Connection Church five one six East Park Avenue. Anybody from the public have any concerns? Anybody here from the public? Do we need a motion to close or do we just close this meeting? Dan, do we need a motion to close this or just close this meeting?
Public hearing.
You can just close.
Close the public hearing.
Okay, at this point, we'll close the public hearing. We'll move right into the next item of site plan review. Pastor Aaron Heard, five one six East Park Avenue, Connection Church. Are you here? Come on up and
Hi.
Hello.
Good morning. Good afternoon.
Morning.
Good evening.
Good day. Yes, definitely.
Well, it sounds a little bit about.
I'd be happy to. Back in twenty twenty two, the Lord had laid on our hearts to open up a new church and he clearly gave us the city of Columbia. That doesn't usually happen. Usually it's a region. It clearly gave us the city of Columbia and now we do live in Boardman. I did grow up in East Palestine, so we're very well aware of this area. It quickly grew to a passion for us and which then we started looking around and we, we started by praying and, and just going around the whole city. Praying over every single house, every single street, every single business. And as we did that, we started making connections, not just with the people here, but also with the other churches who have welcomed us with open arms. We are part of the ministerial association here in town, as well as have already connected with other church leaders and churches within the community. As we continue to look, we look for a space and this is where we ended at five sixteen East Park. It just fits exactly. We walked in. It's like when you walk into a home and you, you know that that's your house. Like, we knew that this was going to be home. What we didn't know was that we needed to come before you. So this is why we're here today, but
Didn't tell you about.
You know, the Lord, he downloaded a lot of things. He might, he might have. So anyhow, so that's where we started looking at five sixteen. Went into an agreement with Capcho LLC, who owns the property. Went into agreement with them. We're on a one year lease with them. Which has worked out beautifully as far as, you know, we started in August with that.
I have a question. Mark, are we voting tonight to approve a site plan and an application for conditional zoning?
The conditional zoning certificate, you actually have thirty days. I mean, that is before you because, quite frankly, a church's conditional use in this particular zoning district, in fact, in every zoning
Right, right.
So that's why you have the conditional use application in front of you. You can approve the site plan. You could take the matter of the conditional zone certificate under advisement.
Who approves that?
Well, you're going to approve that.
Tonight or thirty days?
Whether you do it tonight or you wait until your next meeting, it's basically that part will be your decision.
So my next question is, Bryce. Are we approving a conditional use zone for the church? The part of the building they're in or the whole building?
From my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Attorney Hudson, it would just be for that church as a tenant.
But the property parcel itself will stay as it is. Okay, alright.
Property doesn't change zoning, doesn't anything change?
I'm just looking at you got a long parcel with different spaces. Are you conditioning that space? In other words, if they got bigger, God bless, and go build their own church, somebody else comes in there, do they need to change anything in there?
No, the property is going to stay what it is. You're granting them the right to make a use that is technically considered a conditional use. So it's not, not actually provided for as a permitted use. It's conditionally permitted.
I'm good with it. I think we're
What do you guys think about approving everything tonight, just to be of peace of mind?
Let's get it done.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we're good.
So, we good?
Yeah, yeah.
I make a motion that we approve the site plan as presented and the conditional use for the church on five sixteen East Park Avenue.
Second, I have a motion and a second.
Sure.
Sure.
I, I live right behind, I live in the, in the base houses, a little fenced in.
Hey, Brian. They're not going to be able to hear you online if, thank you.
I live right behind the, the house on the bend. Rick knows me for, for many, many years. Thirty seven years to be exact. I guess we have a, a couple of concerns, basically from the, from the parking standpoint. Mr. Becker, about five, six years ago, put in drain tile. Cause he was, he wanted to expand the lot that is directly behind me. For additional parking for Keith Chamberlain and, and whoever was in that building. So not necessarily a big deal. But when he put in that drain tile, he didn't tie it in to anything. So that comes, he, it basically runs right to the corner of his lot and dumps on my lot and dumps on my neighbor's lot.
So that would not fall under us? That would fall under zoning? Correct?
See, I'm
That's a, that, that is a water application. This is a permitted use application.
Well, I mean
So you would have to go in front of zoning, correct, Mark?
If we're permitting use.
You guys can deal with stormwater, things like that as part of site plans. So I think you
But we have an existing condition.
Deal with it.
We have an existing condition.
Pardon?
We have an existing condition as being presented here.
And I did notify when, when the building first went up for sale, the end of June or July. I emailed June Cusick and I just said, here's my concerns. This has been going on for years. Dan Becker was supposed to, I've talked to Dan numerous times, including up at the Legion. And I said, you know, you put in this, well, he turned around and just dumps, now he has none of his drain, uh, downspouts tied in. So not only the drain tile, but all the, uh, downspouts just run out onto the ground. One, in fact, ten feet from the building, heading in, uh, heading towards the park, which runs straight onto my yard. Which, which obviously is going to get worse with additional parking because the ground's going to be compacted. That's my concern. And I, you know, when I notified them, Gene says, I will make sure, uh, July thirtieth, that I'll pass this along to the owners. And I don't know if there's a trust set up for when Dawn and Donna and Dan passed. I don't know. But my fear is that, you know, and it's nothing against the church. Praise God, you know, we, we get a church. But my concern is, is that additional parking, more people, I, I had a big crowd at mass, you know, services a couple of weeks ago when they were there. That the additional parking is going to cause the ground to compact again, and the runoff will be worse to my, I mean, I get a puddle as it is from that drain tile that just ends nowhere, goes nowhere. Now I got downspouts that just run out into his yard into my, my yard, my neighbor's yard. And on that, on the east half of it, on the other two neighbors. Now, they already had to put in a French drain. They paid for around those two, the third and fourth house to get to get the water to channel to the ditch. Mine comes right now, sits, sits along my fence. I've already had to replace half a dozen posts and stuff from just either rotting or just collapsing because the ground's so wet constantly. So my concern is, you know, if the church does have the parishioners that have been there and it's probably going to grow, problem's going to worsen. And it's going to worsen for me, which makes it an issue.
Okay, just, just a second. It, it sounds like, I get the fact that there's a problem.
Alright.
That's what I'm hearing.
Alright.
There's a problem. What I'm trying to do up here and looking for advice on, it sounds like maybe if they have the church, there might be greater. I'm, I'm having a hard time. It sounds like the whole facility is your whole issue.
It had flooding there. I mean, numerous times fans going in. So I know that it's, it's probably going to worsen. That's my fear. Not only from the water that runs into mine and my neighbors and et cetera. But as that congregation grows, I would see more people are going to be parking, filling up that empty lot and coming closer to my house.
Bryce, do you have any idea when they're going to start the East Park project?
So Beverly and Ray, the stormwater project, I should be starting any day now. Yurians are on that job. Um, you know, typically if, if a new building would come, for example, in town, they would have to go through engineering and have to do stormwater plans and regulation plans. Now, this is a little different because there's an existing building. So I guess I'm kind of looking to mark a little bit to see if we just work with the property owners to remedy the situation, or I don't know how we can reverse.
Well, the reason I asked the question was, it's my understanding that East Park Avenue, we're lowering the grade by possibly two to three feet to get water and curb. Cause that was discussed when we approved, uh, Dr. Lisa's veterinarian clinic. That's why she didn't finish. So the question, I guess, to your, to what you're asking is if you can wait, and I hate to ask you to do that, but if you can wait until maybe we find out if that building can be tied into the project and bring the water to the front, if we're going to lower the grade far enough. That'll take care of everybody's problem.
Oh, that's
But that whole development, not just that building, but all the way down through.
Because it sits below the road.
And then like Dr. Lisa's, they put their retention pond in and that water ends up clear down by, uh, the upper room. That's where that water in my
Correct.
It ends up clear down at the upper room. So we might be able to kill, for lack of a better word, two birds with one stone. Would you agree? If, I, I, that's what I was told, is they were going to lower that grade down.
Down.
And they're going to put water, they're going to put curb and gutter in there and a new street.
And I, I don't, there's any ill towards the church.
No, no.
Bring it on. I just want to be, if we're talking about planning, then, then something's got to be done with it. Because now that he put metal roofs on it, it sheds water like unbelievable.
And I can appreciate your concern, but the, but then it's just not that building. It's the rest of the town going down because nobody has anywhere for water to go.
Right.
What's your thoughts on that, Bryce?
Which is my yard. So hence, hence me being here.
As, I mean, uh, Howson Baird may have created, uh, a potential waterway to get water coming down through to Dr. Lisa's retention pond and then carry out to the upper room.
Yeah, it's designed, I mean, it's slated to fix stormwater in that entire area. Um, especially on Beverly and Ray and kind of come out in the creek, um, behind the, uh,
It's just like every other project we have encountered now. We're trying to adapt things, but that project hasn't started, which I was surprised it hadn't started yet. But that might be
And I guess my, my thing was with the, with the church, I didn't know if it was necessary a purchase. Meaning even though the for sale signs going up, but, and also not only for me, but for them, if they started to experience flooding, because if they, like I said, he has three risers coming out of the ground on the, on the, uh, west side of the building. None of them are tied in. They're just a bit, one of them has one downspout and shoots out in the yard.
So, so like, like answer, that would be where would, if it was tied in, what would be tied into?
Well, and I
Yeah.
When he, when he
It's like the houses, if you look at the houses down through.
Yeah, is that going to, is that going to run more water directly onto you?
Well, they get any additions. Yeah, because as that's flattened back out.
Well, no, no, if you were tying to a pipe, where is that pipe and where does that pipe go? That's the question.
That is a, a good question. We all know that some of the old drain tile stop isn't marked and, you know, we ran into that, you know, constantly in the front yard. And, you know, I'm just trying to, for myself and my wife gone, you know, that church is, I love, the church is fine. I, I, from a planning standpoint, other than the additional traffic that that's going to create and obviously could worsen, worsen the wa, the runoff.
Would it be okay to ask Howson Baird to take a look at that? Bryce?
We can certainly make a phone call and see if we can piece the puzzle together a little better.
Mark, do you have any thoughts on that? With Howland Baird, look at that, what the problem is, because it's, it's the whole neighborhood. It's just not just
Right.
So you have, you know, a site plan in front of you and you have, so for conditional zoning certificate, basically one of the things you look at is a determination that it doesn't cause any exacerbation, I suppose, of existing problems. You know, because you're looking at something that is technically not permitted. And most can, most conditional uses kind of go above and beyond what the permitted uses are. I mean, a church is a conditionally permitted use in a residential district. So is that above and beyond single family residences? Sure. Multi-family? Sure. So, you know, when you look at conditional uses, you do have quite a bit of discretion as far as if it's not going to cause any additional problems. So then the question becomes, okay. Let's say that you think, well, we need to handle the whole stormwater drainage problem in that area. That, I think, then gets beyond what you're looking at for this one little conditional use.
I mean, the whole town has suffered through this.
And I, and I don't know, you know, again, we're walking in, trying to figure out the, the usage and everything. Um, one, first of all, I'm sorry that's happening. Second of all, you know, we wouldn't have known that that gravel parking lot was creating any kind of issue. Um, however, it, we're there, the, the bulk of it, we're Saturday night service. So there's no additional parking, like we're, we don't have the storefronts and us, we're not, you know, competing with each other on that, so Saturday night. The second is a more of a question, and I don't know if this is, can be answered here or not. But the park is within walking distance and at least not our parishioners necessarily, until we grow further. Could we have our leaders parked there conditionally until we can figure out what's going on? That way, we're not worried about crushing any pipes or doing anything like that. Would that be something that might at least temporarily solve that or not, you know, create?
Well, in my personal opinion, I don't think the upper parking lot, for lack of a better word, is the problem. I think it's the downspouts behind the building that go where they go because they're not tied in anything, because there's nothing to be tied into. That's what I look at.
But
But I can't
Your church flooding now. You don't need that.
Do you want to speak to it?
That other gentleman needs to say his name at some point.
We need your name.
He didn't ident, sorry. The gentleman didn't identify himself.
I've heard you.
I need you to identify yourself for the record, please. Your names? Pardon?
Brian Cease.
Brian Cease, how's that spelled?
S E E S E.
S E E S E? Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm T M E Birmingham and I'm one of the owners, um, of the property. And, um, as far as the parking goes, I, and could we, do you have so much overflow that you would need to park over in that area?
As of right now, we don't.
We don't. So you could keep it at the front.
No, we don't, we have, because, yeah.
Okay. So, so we could accommodate and then that way till we can get this like all figured out. Um, we will absolutely work with, um, whoever needs to be worked with. We did, after mom and dad passed, we did put, um, some accommodations for the side of the building that, that Mr. Cease is speaking of. And to prevent any type of water infiltration. But yes, as Jeff has said, that there have been years that, um, the whole town has, you know, before my mom and dad were even involved in community, um, and with, you know, the planning commission and, and whatnot. They suffered with trying to figure out that very same thing. They put, um, and correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, this is my husband, Paul. Um, there was a dry
There's, there's drain tiles out throughout the whole side lot. And there's a dry sump in the, in the yard. It's eight foot by eight foot by eight foot deep. Okay, that's where, that's where those tiles go to. Now, what he's talking about, the downspout is probably thirty feet from his property. Okay? I can take that off. You know, but same token too, is that there is no place for me to put that water because there is no storm source in that area. And secondly is that we would, if we would have known there was a problem, okay, my father-in-law would have told me that there was a problem. And the thing is, you've been there for thirty seven years. So for like this, and all of a sudden, this is a problem. Okay, and I understand, I'm, I'm not, so you're up on the high side of the, of the whole property there. Okay.
You guys are higher than me.
Not, I shot elevations all the way across there. Okay, with the transit. So I know exactly what the height is and stuff like that. I can't control where that water going. I'm trying to control it, but I, there is no place for me to put that water.
Yeah, there's no piping in the ground to adapt to.
There's nothing. So that's been there for seventy years, eighty years of ownership there.
I, I guess my point is, is if the street is lowered as much as I think they're going to lower East Park Avenue, there may be a remedy here for a lot of people to tie in.
To push it up down.
To push it down the street. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Cause that water, it does, it has nowhere to go.
No.
I mean, even your neighbors to the east of you have flat spots that have nowhere to go. What was the lady in the red brick house? She passed away many, many years ago.
Down.
Lip, Mrs. Lip, if she was married to a lip. Right just past you guys. Red brick. She has a whole field. She went to press insurance. She had the whole field.
Is that the Kayler old property, Dr. Kayler?
It might be. And it just, that water just lays there. It has nowhere to go. So it's just not, I, I agree with you. It's just not one thing, but it's
I want to work with you. I have no, I have nowhere to put the wall.
Okay. Thanks for your clarification. Um, I'm trying to think how this, this, you know, it seems like we have two discussions, but I don't know how the issue about the water directly affects the conditional use. I'm struggling with it. Because what I'm saying is, that sounds like I'm having trouble in my mind, understanding if you park cars there, how it would create more water. I, I know you got a problem, but it, cars parked up in that lot would create more water onto your property than
I believe so. Just from the compact is, they haven't really parked a, a lot of cars there in the past. I mean, Keith Chamberlain's pulled a communication trailer and stuff like that.
Okay, so you're saying that you don't think the, uh, church needs that parking area right now?
Right now, but I agree with him, you know, our plan is to grow. You know, but things are going through with water, whatever.
Also, that, that side lot where you got the gravel, that side lot's been in there for over thirty five years.
Yeah.
You know, that's been there for ever.
True.
And the thing is, you know, Fourth of July, there's parking in that, that whole field, you know, with Fourth of July people parked there. You know, it's, it just didn't happen seven years ago, six years ago. It's been there for thirty five years.
Okay. How's it affecting the motion?
Well, in my opinion, we have a motion, we have a second for conditional use. Mark brought up that, well, if you have problems, but I don't look at this as a problem. If they were selling the building, which the buildings were sold, but it's not sold, that's when we would have to take action. They had Apple Insurance in there and we didn't have a problem. We're moving a church in there and all of a sudden we have a new tenant and we have a problem. I think we need to separate the problems.
That's what I'm saying.
After, if there's a sale. But I do, like you said, I want to make sure you get taken care of. But then you got to take care of the whole neighborhood. And it's the same problems we've had at that side of town when everybody's basement got flooded after a good hundred year rain. So
I really don't think the conditional use has anything to do with the water.
No.
That, that's my
Or the fact that they want to, the site plan review has anything to do.
That, that's what I'm saying.
So I'm saying, in my opinion, we go with the motion, the second and vote.
And with the same time, we've identified a problem, which we need to develop some strategy to deal with it. And everybody's been good about speaking to it, but it seems like that's over here and then we've got
So Bryce
I agree with Ted.
So Bryce could talk to Howson Baird and see if they could
Yeah.
Take a look at that. Because I mean, we made Dr. Lisa put in an extensive extension pond for her property. I just don't know if it was collecting some of the water from the other neighbors, but yeah. And that's why we're doing Ray and Beverly and all the other places, because all that water just lays there.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion.
In a second. So Dan, when you're ready.
Jeff?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Yes.
Ted?
Yes. Okay, you're good to go with your church and we'll look into your problem. Next item was seven fifteen, we're a little behind schedule. Public hearing, application for conditional zoning seniors of Clumbana County Association, one forty-five South Vine Street. Barb, you're up.
Hi. So I've applied for a conditional use permit for that property at, uh, one four five South Vine Street. Um, we've applied for it, uh, it's, uh, for senior citizens as a drop-in center and, uh, meeting place. It's zoned R two.
Is it a house?
It's a house.
It's a house.
It's a house.
The house, yeah.
The house. So Mark, how does that fall into place being zoned R two? And that type of business?
Well, you're dealing with something that is not residential, but if you look at the conditional use uses under an R two, um, I think Bryce believed that's why we set it. And I had talked about this, that it fits within one of the conditional uses. As a result, that's why you're having a public hearing on a conditional use.
And the citizens have, and the neighborhood have been notified, Bryce?
Yeah, everyone that touches the property directly across the street from was sent a certified letter, notice of the public hearing tonight.
Okay, is there anybody here on that?
Is there anybody else to speak to? Yes, please. Barb, Barb, you're not letting her speak. Yeah, give her the mic, yes.
My name is Susan DeCesar. I own the business across the street. I'm a real estate appraiser. So, uh, my concern was just a couple of things, um, parking. Uh, cause my side of the street is uncommercial and that, that side of the street is unresidential. I don't know what type of business they were having. I don't know if this is going to be excessive parking. I mean, I wanna be a good neighbor and I want everything. I just didn't know how that's gonna be handled. Also, when you give a conditional use, is that transferable? Is that like, well, somebody, is it just for her, for that particular property at this given time? So it can't switch to?
And the answer is, no, it's not transferable.
Okay.
A conditional use is actually reviewable. I mean, when somebody asks for a conditional use, and in this case, we're looking at a quasi-public recreational and or instructional use or fraternal or community service use, that is subject to review if this planning commission decides to review the use. So what I always tell people, when you apply for and obtain a conditional use, you know, you can't really expand it, you can't do a lot of things because you didn't exactly fit in that particular area to begin with.
Okay.
So, can it be transferred? No.
Okay.
It's just this particular.
No, no male stripper.
But anyways, that, my biggest concern was the parking situation and I didn't know what, you know, like what type of business it was gonna be. Is it gonna be on all hours and like, is somebody, you know, is there gonna be occupants? Is it gonna be like a, a senior living?
No.
Facility or whatever, so that's, yeah.
No, it's basically uh, more quasi-public recreational, instructional or fraternal. So I think.
So just a hangout?
Yeah, I like, Barbara can explain that.
I didn't know what that meant. I was like.
Yeah, what does that mean?
What does that mean? Like I said, no senior strip club.
No. Nothing like that.
Okay, I'm okay with everything. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
De C E S A R E.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay.
So is this business, uh, like a phone bank? Is it people should come in periodically?
White House and Bar, go ahead.
No, we've been meeting at the library and, uh, it's been maybe six months or so. We're not very old, I think eight, eight months ago, we organized, um, we, at any one time at the library, we had for our little table games, which are, you know, like Yahtzee and Bongo and Party Bingo and stuff. At any one time, we had eighteen people. Um, we don't expect the place actually is set up for about eighteen to twenty people. There'd never be probably any more than that. Um, I don't know about that parking lot right across the street that is part of PNC, I guess. It's part of the employee parking lot for PNC at the top. Um, and, but I don't know, I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's not heavily used. Um, I would imagine that we could park in that if they, if.
Is that a city parking lot? Post office parking lot? Now it's PNC parking lot?
Yeah, I believe with that specific lot, you need to coordinate with the lot owner. But the one out in front of Hogan's or the Murals are, that's a municipal lot.
So it's PNC all the way to Vine Street?
I, I think so.
Yeah, that lot is PNC.
Cause the post office parks there, uh, uh, what's this thing?
Oh, there is a lot of people who've used it, but PNC's basically controlled it as long as I can remember.
So you may wanna check with the bank.
Yeah.
Sure.
So.
Anything else?
The community parking would be up there at the Schmidt parking area, because that's public parking.
Right.
Um, you got a little bit of a walk.
Yeah.
Do you have a physical fitness program tied with this? This should be it.
I thought about that, but when they park the library, they have to park in that parking lot and they have to go across the little street.
Right.
Up some steps and it'd be about the same.
Yeah, that's what my thought is.
Yeah.
As a possibility. Do you have any parking spaces on the actual property?
A driveway.
A driveway.
That's, yeah, the driveway accommodates maybe two cars.
Do you live in this facility or this residence?
I live on, uh, North Line.
Your, yeah.
Yeah, I, um, but no one will live in the house.
So you'll be primarily afternoon, early evening?
We've just done afternoons.
Okay.
Yeah, and we haven't done anything in the evening. Um, usually it's a week night, week afternoon about one o'clock. We're in the library usually from one o'clock to about three o'clock on a Wednesday afternoon.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's basically, you could call it a clubhouse if you want, not a strip club. Basically, it's.
Just so they don't have happy hour.
A fraternal club is basically what it amounts to.
The social.
Social.
Right, it's in front of you because you're in an R two district and in an R two district, this becomes a conditional use.
Yeah.
Is, is that alcohol allowed, permitted in those type of properties?
You still have to fit within the district that we're talking about. And is alcohol allowed? Arguably, you could say in any of the residences, their alcohol is allowed. However, you're not allowed to sell it without a permit.
And then depending what precinct you're in. Depending what precinct you're in, whether it's.
You're not gonna get a permit.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Uh, you've done a good job. Thank you. Uh, just, I want for the record to be said that the notices were sent out. None of the neighbors in the adjacent housing have chosen to come here, correct? So I just wanna make that point, except for you, which we're glad you came and brought us up to speed on the, um, you know, what might go in there.
There too, I forgot to say that too, is the building on the other side of me was just purchased too and they are in that's uncommercial and they are in the process of gutting it and I have no idea what they plan on doing for that. So I don't know if that's going to be a business or, but you know, I know the people that bought it, they usually fix it up and, you know, sell it. Or re, you know, rehab, quick sale, whatever you wanna call it, so.
They'll likely have to come before the planning commission.
Right, they would have to. They would have to come to us if it's a business.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So do we wanna handle this the same way we handled the other one?
We'd have to close the public hearing.
Okay. Make a motion to close the public hearing, or I'll just close the public hearing.
Just close.
At this time, we'll close the public hearing. And now do we wanna handle this the same way we handled the last and, and bunch them together?
You go with it.
I'll make a motion to that effect, which is that we will approve the, uh, I may, I move that we approve the conditional use plan as well as the site plan as presented.
I'll second that.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. They're ready, Dan.
Rick?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes. We're done.
Okay. Last item, amendments to the zoning map. Kevin Price, KDC Properties, one through forty-two January. C four to R two P U D. Hi, Kevin.
Good evening.
I think we've been here before on this.
We, we have, we have. Good to see you guys again. Well, I think it's pretty well straightforward there. I chambered and put the maps out and you guys have had a chance to look at them. And what we're trying to do is go down the process of going from a C four to an R two to finish off the triplexes that we're building back there uh, towards the front and, um.
Are you still doing the memory center towards the front?
No.
You're not.
So you have, you, you do not need commercial use of that property. Now you'd rather make it the residential. That's your desire.
That's my desire, yes. The, the, the memory care just didn't work out for us, so.
And this, this includes part of your property?
Right.
Okay.
So we're gonna get rid of all C two or C four? And turn it into R two, or we're just doing, so we're gonna do it, keep doing segments?
Well, we're just gonna get rid of the
That one segment.
Two point seven acres, right?
Yeah, but there's still some left.
Either side.
Yes. Yes.
Way back when, we had talked about R two P U D for this property and Rob, Kevin, you can tell me, was it three years ago? I think, yeah.
Yeah, that, so,
you know, unfortunately, since it's C four, we have to go through the process of a zoning amendment. And when you change the map, which this changes the zoning map, there's a little bit more of a procedure that has to be dealt with. So that's where we are. So from here, this will go to council, um, where it will hold another public hearing on the amendment.
So are we approving to change this as a committee and then present it to council?
Yes.
Yes, you're basically approving it, which will then send it to council.
Okay.
Recommending, you could say, you know, since you're recommending the council approve the zone change.
Is there any reason why you're still doing it in segments and just not doing the whole thing to be done?
Um, I'm not sure I understand.
I mean, you're still gonna have some C four left, correct?
No, I don't think you will.
No, it's all, it's all gonna be R two, the whole thing's shebang.
Except, except for his property is.
His property.
Yes.
Existing use.
Yeah, you, you still have the C four.
Yeah, yeah, so that, that's it then. So you're just gonna take it R two and be done?
Yes.
Okay, alright. So I'll make a motion to amend the zoning from a C four to an R two, R two P U D as presented.
I'll second that motion.
And that is a motion recommending to council to
To.
amend the zoning.
Correct.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
You're ready, Dan.
Ted?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes. Okay, so on to the, on to the show.
Keep going.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any commission comments? Any public comments? Anybody in the public lot can make a comment? I will make the motion to adjourn.
So move.